Please rise for the pledge. The pledge alleges.
Good and quiet, United States of America. Consider it a honor for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Erby? Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis? Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
I move for the approval of a journal for the meeting of September 19th, 2017.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The September 19th, 2017 journal is approved. We have no bid openings tonight, so we'll move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one.
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. And that will be the order.
Item number two, 7th District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, 7th District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
We have nothing under road and bridge matters this evening, Mr. Chair, so we'll move to other communications. Under other communications, item number one.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three, 2nd District.
Receive file and agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, 3rd District.
Receive file and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
Item number five, 6th District.
Receive file and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, 2nd District.
Receive file and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven.
Receive file and approve as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight, 6th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number nine, 2nd District.
Receive file and matter be held on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 10.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 11.
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 12, 2nd District.
Same motion, and that will be the order.
Item number 13, 2nd District.
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 14, 1st, 2nd, 4th, and 5th Districts.
Receive file and contract an amount not to exceed $1,738,518.46 be approved and awarded to TGB Inc., the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revisions to existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 15, 2nd District.
Receive file and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and copy this report be sent to the interested parties, and that will be the order.
Item number 16, 3rd, 5th, and 6th Districts.
Receive file, contract an amount not to exceed or excuse me, 6 cents, be approved and awarded to TGB Inc., the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revisions to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 17, 4th District.
Receive file, contract an amount not to exceed be approved and awarded to Rainier Construction LLC, the lowest responsive bidder as recommended, and authorization for revision to the existing traffic control devices be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 18, 5th District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
So ordered.
Item number 19, 6th District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 27, 7th District.
Receive file and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, 5th District.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number two, 1st District.
Receive file and county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order. Report to county executive.
Nothing further this evening.
No special committees to report, so we'll proceed with the public forum.
We have 30 speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. In the interest of ensuring that everyone tonight is heard, and I know we have a lot of folks that have something to say, we do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes and that you be respectful of everyone here with your language choices. And if you're here for the first time, we do ask that you refrain from foul language, that you address the chair with any comments. And we ask the audience to refrain from applause and other comments because it does slow down our process and the ability of other folks in here to be heard. But we do want to hear what you have to say, and we welcome you to the public forum portion of our meeting.
Okay. First speaker will be Marissa South-Hard, hands, followed by Robert Hoffman.
It's Southerd's, by the way. I'm a voting resident of St. Louis County in the aftermath of the Galleria arrest in Councilman Pat Dolan's district. I'm frankly disgusted by the escalation of violence at the hands of the police department. I've witnessed incredible violations of rights and the introduction of the phrase "police riot" into the language lexicon. I live in District 5, the same district belonging to Pat Dolan and the same district in which the Galleria police riot occurred. Councilman Dolan, your silence is deafening. I will take your silence as your consent and approval of the actions of this police department. In case you are unclear of their recent actions, here's a brief recap of just one day. Violent arrests against citizens exercising their constitutional rights, denial of counsel to those arrested, denial of access to an on-duty judge to counsel, denial of timed sensitive medications to arrestees, authority to city officers, namely Brian Rosamano of the St. Louis Metro Police Department, not once but twice in the last six days. What can you do? Creation and implementation of a true civilian oversight board is necessary. The Police Commissioners Board does not represent the citizens of this county. Until that time that a new board can be implemented, we demand the Commissioners Board meetings be moved to another location that is not the police headquarters, meetings be made public, and citizens be encouraged to attend as this is currently the only means of oversight. Immediate de-escalation training for all officers of St. Louis County Police Department. I have called upon this council in the past to provide mental health training as well after the killing of Thaddeus McCarrill at the hands of St. Louis County Police before. Your refusal to train your officers on mental health awareness and de-escalation tells me you don't care about the safety of all of your citizens, only the citizens that kick to your campaigns. Four of you go up for reelection next year. Your citizens are watching, and unlike you, we will not be silenced.
We have 29 more speakers, and I suspect that you all will agree with the lot that they have to say. But we would ask you to refrain from applauding and be respectful of our speakers. Thank you.
Next speaker is Robert Hoffman, followed by Deborah Kennedy.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name is Robert Hoffman. I own Hoffman Brothers Heating and Air Conditioning, a local contractor here in St. Louis County. I'm also a St. Louis County resident. I'm here to speak. You guys have heard the last couple of weeks from Kelly and Tyler about the St. Louis County licensing issue. 20 years ago, St. Louis County passed a law that anybody who wants to do mechanical work has to go to school. They have to work four to five years in an apprenticeship program. Then they have to go to St. Louis County and take a test. For the last 17 years, the pass rate on that test has been 80%. St. Louis County decided to use a new testing company, and for the first several months, the pass rate was about 16%. After years of complaining, this had been going on almost three years. After years of complaining, they finally let us look at the test, and we found that they had incorrect answers on the test. We took that, and for some reason, the testing agency wanted $15,000 to fix their mistakes, and the county authorized that, and I don't know why. But they did. They fixed the test, and the test has been available now for a month, but you haven't let it out. I mean, there are people out there who have spent $20,000 on education, spent four years in an apprenticeship program. They spend $100 to take this test. They have to take a day off of work. They have... It has just cost them a fortune, and they're about to give up on their career because of a bad test. And so I don't know what's holding it up. Whatever's holding it up is under your authority, Steve, and I wish you would do something about it. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Deborah Kennedy, followed by Representative Stacey Newman.
I was present for the police riot at the Galleria. I had the pleasure of being in the company of two Department of Justice agents when the police decided to have a riot at the Galleria. We were walking about 10 feet behind the protesters who were walking and just chanting and holding signs. All of a sudden, St. Louis County and Richmond Heights Police Officers ran past us, and the St. Louis County cop had one of those orange guns, and he had it like this. And I turned to the Department of Justice guys, and I said, "They're getting ready to start shooting people." And so one of them said, "Well, let's go." And we started running behind them, and we came up on them down there by Macy's, and they were attacking citizens. They were body slamming people on the ground. And I was videotaping. They were being very violent. I was very shocked to see St. Louis County Police behave in that manner. I'm accustomed to St. Louis City cops behaving like that when they arrest people. They usually act like thugs, and I was very disappointed in the St. Louis County Police because I never could imagine them behaving in that manner. We heard no dispersal orders. There were no egress instructions. And there definitely was no time between the time that they blew their whistle and started chasing people. There was no time to let people leave if they even wanted to leave. There was clearly a riot carried out by overzealous and heavy-handed police. Please make sure that an independent investigation of their police misconduct. Please don't allow them to investigate themselves. And I'm pretty sure you'll be hearing from those Department of Justice guys if you haven't heard from them yet.
Next speaker is State Representative Stacey Newman, followed by Talia Earl.
Good evening. I'm State Representative Stacey Newman. I represent the 87th District, which includes all of Clayton and parts of Richmond Heights. Tonight, I have a letter that we're presenting to county executive Steve Stenger and every St. Louis County Council member. We are formally asking you for a formal investigation into the incident at the St. Louis Galleria on Saturday, September 23rd. We request this investigation to be performed by an independent, experienced legal investigator who is outside St. Louis County Government and the St. Louis County Police Department with the suggestion of a retired judge from the St. Louis City Circuit Court. 22 citizens were arrested at the Galleria and held overnight in the St. Louis County Justice Center for 24 hours before being released with various charges. The co-signed here legislators and faith leaders have many questions as to the availability that evening of legal counsel, adequate medical care and needed medicines given to those arrested, as well as law enforcement procedures that were used at the Galleria and the Justice Center. Because of these questions and many more that are coming from eyewitness accounts, we strongly urge you as St. Louis County elected officials to conduct an investigation of your own. We believe it is imperative. We are also asking for the U.S. Department of Justice to investigate as well. This letter is signed by Congressman William Lacy Clay, Representative Cora Faith Walker, Representative Tommy Pearson Jr., Representative Alan Gray, Representative Joe Adams, Representative Deb Lavender. These are all St. Louis County legislators and faith leaders, which include Rabbi Shulamit Senker, Reverend Karen Anderson, Rabbi Randi Flesher, Rabbi Andrea Goldstein, Reverend Cassandra Gould, Rabbi Dale Schreiber, Rabbi Susan Talby, Reverend Clinton Stansel, and Reverend Stephen Shepherd, and Rod Chappell, who is president of the Missouri State Conference of the NAACP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Talia Earl, followed by Adine O'Brien.
I was one of the 22 arrested on Saturday. I'm a PTSD survivor, and what I was put through and what I saw on Saturday and Sunday, those 24 hours, was very triggering. And I was denied my medication during that time to help me with my PTSD, so you can imagine how awful I felt. How the cops treated people at the mall, at the Galleria, was completely unacceptable. They have been waging war on the citizens of St. Louis City, St. Louis County, and the rest of the nation for years, and especially black folks. When will this end? When will you decrease their funding and put that money towards good use, such as public schools and Medicare for All? The cops are guilty and complacent in white supremacy and everything. They think they can beat people and get away with it, and it's unacceptable. That's why we're out in the streets every night protesting them. They need to stop waging this war on the poor, especially poor black folks. Capitalism is the disease, and the cops are the symptom of all of this. This needs to end now.
Next speaker is Adine O'Brien, followed by Christine Keller.
My name is Adine O'Brien. I was one of the 22 arrested at the Galleria. I would just like to say this. There is a difference between law and order and justice. There is right and wrong. And just doing the job won't cut it anymore. You were civil servants. Act like it. What I experienced was just a percentage of the brutality that people of color faced. As one of those arrested by the police at the Galleria Mall, what happened was not protecting and serving. It was cracking down on free speech. I hope that one day, those who are good in the force will speak up for what is right and not be complicit to systemic oppression. I hope public servants who are guilty of misdeeds are met with real consequences. Thank you.
Next speaker is Christine Keller, followed by Jody Allen.
I can ask again that you all hold your applause, and we can... We can take our time to listen to the speakers who have all worked hard to prepare their remarks. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Keller, and I live and work in the county. I've heard the word "police riot", and really, and sadly, I have to agree. I was not one of the 22 arrested, nor were my two children, nor was my husband. But we were four of the 125-plus people who had to run for our lives out of that mall. It was scary. It was terrifying. I live 10 minutes from the mall, and I don't know if I can go back. We heard no warning. We heard a whistle, and people ran. I was pushed. It was incredibly awful. I would just echo the call for an independent investigation. But I also believe that our region, but particularly the county in which I live, should work to seek economic, educational, and legal justice for the citizens in our communities who don't have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jody Allen, followed by Basil.
This is so nervous. So nervous. So I was at the mall also with my three kids. And I can't speak as eloquently as a lot of these people. I just wanted to come up and say that as a white person in support of the Black Lives Matter movement, I feel like my job is to be a radical listener. And so I do my best to show up and read and study. And so part of that, right, as a mom to three kids that are 9, 10, and 12, I felt like I wanted them to experience and just to see just a little piece of what's happening. I went to two protests over the weekend outside. They both were peaceful. I didn't go late at night. After the West County protest, I felt like the Galleria... We live in Webster Groves. I felt like the Galleria was a really safe place to take my kiddos. We'd walk the halls and then leave. We happened to be right in the area, in the back. We were not in the middle of everything. As the police came down the hallway, right next to each other, kind of shoulder to shoulder, my kids were really upset, so we kind of scooted out of the way. But there wasn't like an easy... We heard the dispersal order, so I wanted to stand up and say, "I did actually hear that." But as protesters were coming down the escalator, everyone was chanting and cheering and clapping. I totally understand that no one else really heard it. From the time we heard the dispersal order till when the whistle started blowing and cops started running and chasing people, it had to be less than a second. And luckily, one of the organizers with a megaphone said, "All the babies, come this way." And anyone with kids were sort of like pushed and ushered out, so we got out really quick. It was the scariest thing I've ever experienced. And so I just wanted to say that something has to change. We should have been able to have our voices heard, come in and leave, and given a chance to get out, especially because there were so many kids there that day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Basal, followed by Angelique Kidd.
What I want to say is as someone who was there, I want to make something very clear. We marched through the Galleria, and before we even started marching, businesses were closed. So I don't understand what warranted such an aggressive response to people just walking through the mall. Secondly, you know, we came down, and when you're in the middle... I don't know if any of you have ever been to a protest or been anywhere where there's a lot of people. It's kind of like being at Dodger Stadium and trying to hear a whisper. Because I didn't hear it personally. And next thing you know, people are being slammed on the ground. A police officer slammed someone on the ground while they're already outside onto the concrete. This video, if you want to do some homework. So what I would say is, number one, ask yourselves why that aggressive of a response was necessary. And two, how would you react if that was one of your loved ones? Would you be upset? Would you want to do something about it? You sit in those seats because some of us at one point believed you could help and make things better. And I hope that you will.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Angelique Kidd, followed by Debbie Donnelly.
Hi, my name is Angelique Kidd. This is my first time attending one of these meetings. I also was a protester at the Galleria. I was not arrested. But from what I observed, that was just happenstance. It was very violent. I also did not hear the dispersal order. And as a Ferguson resident, I'm well... I'm very familiar with the way it works. I know when the dispersal order is given, I know what I'm supposed to do in order to avoid arrest. I know how to follow the rules, you know. I was not given an opportunity to follow the rules. I did not hear the dispersal order. I was over by the woman on the megaphone. So I was in the middle, closer to Macy's. I did not hear a dispersal order. In fact, I didn't even believe that it had happened until I saw it on video. I find it hard to believe that our police cannot effectively make their voices loud enough to be heard in any type of environment. I find that very difficult to believe. And then what I saw was very violent and was very scary. But what I also saw was while one person was being tackled to the ground. And it's hard to look at everything, you know, when it's going on. Everyone was handcuffed, and it was just a matter of minutes where I saw another police officer pick up a Black Lives Matter sign and hand it to a protester, and she walked away with it. So my question is, where is the consistency? And I would also... I would urge that if you have any power at all and that you're able to do it, that footage be reviewed and that anyone that was arrested and only charged with refusal to disperse, those charges should be dropped immediately. And I also think you should drop any other charges that you can't verify are actually true. Because what we do in instinct when we're scared is different than how we act in instinct if an officer was to walk up to us and say, "I am placing you under arrest." So two different situations. But when people are yelling and screaming, and you have men tackling you or people that you love, you're going to react differently than you would in an environment where you're just stating, someone just states that you're under arrest. So I would think that that should be taken into consideration instead of tacking on huge felony charges for people who truly had no intention of breaking any type of law. Thank you.
Next speaker is Debbie Donnelly, followed by Al Gerber.
My name is Debbie Donnelly.[1665.66]
I'm a resident of Chesterfield, a member of We Can and MCU. First, I'd like to thank all of you for your service in this community, because we did vote for you, and we do expect more. In light of the abhorrent police behavior towards peaceful protesters, I'm here to express my concerns about how the money from Prop P will be used. As a citizen who voted for Prop P, I expect the money to be used to promote public safety, specifically through the Police Department, with public input and transparency through a single lying item in the budget. The past show of force by the St. Louis County Police Department during the protests at the St. Louis Galleria is an example of the need for Prop P money to increase training and de-escalation techniques during all police matters and especially civil protest. Spending Prop P money for ongoing training and implicit bias is essential to hear, see, and begin to respect all voices in our diverse community. This is a lifetime work that requires the money we now have through Prop P to implement for our officers. Psychological vetting for police applicants is a must to ensure that our community has the finest candidates to be trained to serve and protect. Chief Belmar states on your website, "Every citizen of St. Louis County deserves quality police services." Then use our Prop P money to ensure this by acquiring body cameras, increasing de-escalation training, community oversight and input, increase community policing aimed at improving trust, closing accountability loopholes for officers' disciplines or discharge, appropriate memorandums of understanding for departments with school resource officers. I want to thank Councilman Harter for your help in passing a resolution for Prop P spending. Now hold those town meetings. Reach out to We Can, Metropolitan Congregations United, and other community groups whose input is valued by this council to come up with a five-year spending plan that addresses the path to ensuring all of our police officers get the tools and training to be the best professionals to serve and protect all of our citizens under the rights afforded to us by our U.S. Constitution. Thank you.
Next speaker is Al Gerber, followed by Cassandra Gahl.
My name's Al Gerber, from Town and Country. In 1955, Bill Clinton said, "White racism may be black people's burden, but it's white people's problem. We must clean our house." With that in mind, I've been present at many of the protests in the past weeks, particularly the one at the Galleria last Saturday. The protest was raucous, loud, and perhaps made some people uncomfortable, but there was no violence from the protesters. The Richmond Heights Police statement mentioned a garbage can being thrown as a justification for their actions. They didn't mention that it was the police who put that garbage can in front of the surging crowd, and they were tripping on it, so someone threw it out of the way. The statement also mentioned three warnings being given. "I was standing right in front of the police supervisor, and I heard an undecipherable sound coming out of his megaphone, but the rest of the crowd couldn't hear it over the chanting. When the police surged forward, the protesters were caught by surprise and didn't know what was happening." Now, I've served with some of you. I served under Colleen on the Public Works Commission in Town and Country, served with Hazel on the Central Committee. So you know that I'm serious when I say there was no violence from the protesters. All the violence there came from the police. Please investigate this and make sure it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Next speaker is Cassandra Gahl, followed by Patrick Weston. Mr. Chair, we asked the speaker to spell her last name so I make sure I have it correct.
Yes, I am Pastor Cassandra Gould, G-O-U-L-D. I'm also the Executive Director of Missouri Faith Voices, which is a statewide faith-based grassroots organization. I was not in the Galleria on Saturday. I was in Illinois performing a wedding and started to get texts about a 13-year-old who had been arrested, who had been assaulted and choked out by police. Didn't have any idea who the 13-year-old was, but as a pastor, that is certainly something that touched my heart. I started to make calls, including to Councilwoman Rochelle Gray, and to ask what could be done about this, and could this child be released, and why would a child be assaulted? After the wedding, I went straight to what should be the Justice Center over across the street, and I was there until midnight. And what I saw was just heart-wrenching. I saw that we really live in a police state, and that no one was in charge except the police, including former judges who came and tried to talk to those who were inside. The Justice Center was on lockdown, and all we were trying to do as a pastor, I was aware that there were people in there, including friends of mine, who needed their medicine. And so we were trying to ensure that an attorney was allowed to take the medicine, stayed there with Rabbi Susan Tabey until about midnight, until medicine got in, only to find out that most of the people whose medicine was delivered before midnight did not receive medicine until the next morning. And so we are in a terrible state. I've been a resident of St. Louis County for probably about three decades. Stacy Newman is my rep. I live in Clayton. My children are Clayton graduates, love the county enough to move back here after college. And I don't really know if this is the kind of place that I want to remain. I don't know if this is the kind of place that we want to hold as a place that families are safe, when families cannot go to the mall, not because protesters are there, but because police are apt to riot, because police are fear mongers who make enough noise and scare people so that people are afraid to come to the mall and the stores have to close so that then it looks like it's the protesters' fault? We're in a really bad place. And so I would implore you that, as many others have said, this is a great opportunity to ask for independent investigation of the issues that happened on Saturday. We cannot trust the police to police themselves. You cannot trust those who will incite riot on innocent citizens. They are here to protect and to serve, something that they're sworn in to do, and they've decided that all of God's children don't need protecting, just some of them. And so I don't want to be in a place that serves terror on its citizens. So please, please, think about what it means, what your job is, and actually act on behalf of all of the citizens of St. Louis County. Thank you.
Next speaker is Patrick Weston, followed by Laura Ladkey.
My name is Patrick Weston, and I'm not a public speaker or an editorialist, but I am a concerned citizen. And I've been complacent a very long time. A lot of the police shootings across the nation didn't move me to action, but what did were the actions of our police. And there's a lot of things I could spend three minutes talking about. I could talk about how they handcuffed the doors to the justice system shut. And that picture, that has done more harm to the police movements than they could have imagined, because those things are symbolic and they go viral. But what I really want to talk about is accountability, because our government was founded on the principle of checks and balances. No arm of the government is above the law. We need accountability, we need transparency, and we need it now. And I have to wonder what the motivations are behind a lot of these actions that I see. If the police really wanted everyone to disperse, why were they kettled in downtown? Why wasn't the dispersal order loud enough to hear at the Galleria? And I've been to some of these protests, and these protests are highly... I'm sorry, may I have your attention? You've been looking really bored all evening, and I would appreciate it if you actually gave us some attention here. Three minutes is a short time.
Okay, so here's a scoop. Your comments need to be directed towards the chair, and try not to engage members of the diocese. That's not our protocol, but we would like to hear what you have to say. It's very important to us.
Understood.
And a lot of the council members are persuaded by the people who've come here to speak, and they have changed our decisions.
Thank you.
So please, please focus on your comments.
So I've been to some of these protests, and they're very organized, and it's easy to tell who the leaders are. If the police really wanted to convey a dispersal order, it would be easy to get the leader's attention and say, "Hey, I have some important information I need to convey." And they would do a mic check, they would get everyone's attention, and they would pass that information along. They wouldn't shake a police officer's hand, they wouldn't hug them, but these are people that understand the needs of the people marching behind them. And safety is important. If you want to disperse the people, give them a clear exit, give them a way to disperse, and make sure the dispersal order is heard. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Laura Ladkey, followed by Queen Doherty.
Hello, thanks for allowing us to speak tonight. I was one of the protesters at the Galleria as well this past Saturday, along with my five-year-old daughter and my 14-year-old daughter. I was standing about 20 feet from the police officer that gave the dispersal order, and I did not hear it. I only know that it was given because I saw some video footage later that showed a police officer with a megaphone saying something. So I know that very quickly after he gave that dispersal order, if that was what it was, the police rushed the crowd indiscriminately tackling and restraining people. Those that were detained by the cops behaved no differently in the moments before that dispersal order was given than anybody else. The protesters were peaceful. We were loud, but we were peaceful, we were not causing any damage, we were not belligerent or inciting the police officers in any way. There were children, babies, strollers, people recovering from surgeries, with health issues, and seniors among us. The police response was unprovoked, overly aggressive, and brought tremendous fear and violence and chaos to the situation. They terrorized the crowd unnecessarily. The fear and confusion they caused my five and 14-year-old daughters is inexcusable. I too would like to see an independent investigation into police actions. This was a tremendously flawed response, and we need to hold those responsible accountable. At the very least, these officers need training in what is and isn't the law. They clearly don't know or don't care. And it's instances like these that ultimately put officers at risk and are a financial burden on the community that could easily be avoided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Queen Doherty, followed by Ben Conover.
I was on my way to the Galleria that evening, but my sister called me. I was with my 15-year-old daughter, then I got my sister called me, because I probably would have got arrested myself. But my son was out there with his wife, and he sent me some pictures that I was really disturbed about. Officer was choking this woman, and he had this baton. I don't know if he hit her or not, and she looked like she was in her 60s. I don't know who this lady was, but she wasn't a protester. I'd never seen her before, and I was wondering, was she okay? I don't know her name, I don't know if y'all know her, but she's been on my mind, my heart so bad. But this officer was choking her, and she was a senior. And like this lady said, it was little babies out there. So I hope you all find out who called this order in on these people like this. That was horrible, and that should never happen again. I'm very ashamed of our system. Very. I want to say something else.
This is my mom, and I walked up with her because I figured she would get emotional. But I just want to add on to what she just said. In the words of a great man that we all look up to, somewhere that we read that we got the right to assemble, somewhere that we read that we got the right to freedom of assembly, the right to press, somewhere that we read that we got the right to all of these things that third world countries don't have. And with that being said, that he also said that the greatness of America is the right to protest for rights. I don't care how many police officers are on the streets, I don't care the shields, the batons, the sirens, the whatever they look like, I can guarantee this, we're not going to be intimidated. Until justice reigns, righteousness prevail through this county, through this state, through this country, the protesters will be out there. Until folks like you are, council, the state, aldermen, whatever you are, until you sit and all cease of power and justice is delivered equitably to everyone, we're going to continue to march the streets. These streets do not belong to you, they do not belong to the police, they do not belong to the executive, nor the council persons. They belong to the people, the people that pay the taxes, the people that go outside of their homes, go to work, go to school, go to the parks, go to the stores on their blocks. These are the streets, those streets belong to the people, not the county executive. So until justice prevails and until righteousness wins, protests will continue. 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 This is only the beginning.
We ask that you all hold your applause. I understand you all have a lot of strong feelings here, but I would like for you to be respectful to the speakers. Our audio will not be able to pick up their testimony over the applause, and then we won't be able to record it in our minutes, and it will be lost. So please be respectful of the folks that have come here to speak and have spent a lot of time preparing their remarks. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the next speaker is Ben Conover, followed by Julie Veal.
Jen, would you please start the clock for him?
I have to start it again, Mr. Chair.
Thanks.
My name's Ben Conover. I'm a resident of University City in St. Louis County. I work as a quality data analyst for a nonprofit that also is in St. Louis County. The reason I'm here to speak to you today is because I was a witness to the police brutality at the Galleria on September 23rd. I'm sure that by now many of the council members have seen the videos on regular and social media of the events, but it's important to get firsthand accounts of the experiences on the ground. When the entirely peaceful protest rallied at the southern end of the mall, we continued with many of the usual chants. It is my understanding that during this time, an order to disperse was given by the police to the protesters. Let me make this very clear. A small fraction of the protesters heard this order. I was not one of the people that heard this order. All that many of us heard was loud whistling, and then immediately saw police officers violently arresting protesters. For the majority of protesters, there was very little to no time to react. Among the instances of violence included were the aggressive tackling of a 13-year-old black boy, the choking of an older black woman, a tackle made with both feet off the ground by a police officer of a black man into multiple sets of metal tables and chairs, the slamming of a protester's head and upper body into the escalator by a police officer, the suplexing, the lifting up and smashing to the ground of a young man on the concrete outside of the mall entrance, and many of us experienced shoving from police officers unrelated to these incidents. I want you to understand that all of this was in response to peaceful protesters and largely to a group that had no warning due to the inaudible nature of the order to disperse. This does not account for all the violence enacted by police officers at the Galleria that day, but it's what I can attest to. Further, after 22 were arrested, some protesting and some not, the denial of right to counsel occurred in an inordinate amount of time. Medications, including life-saving medication to a friend who recently had a kidney transplant and was not protesting, were denied for multiple hours. Symbolically, as many others have noted, the Justice Center was locked with a pair of handcuffs. The abuses by the police and then at the Justice Center of peaceful protesters and bystanders are absolutely unacceptable, unethical, and must be dealt with. I assume many of you, your friends and family, have shopped at the Galleria. I want you to think about what your response might be if one of your peaceful family members were violently arrested by police officers while shopping for a suitcase, as my friend who had the kidney transplant was. I want you to understand that this is not okay. I call on you to make this right, implement the recommendations of the Ferguson Commission report, and use Prop P money for police accountability in the interest of public safety. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Julie Veal, followed by John Chaswell.
Hi, my name's Julie Veal. I live in Spanish Lake, Missouri. I stand with the protesters. It's important to have our freedom of speech, our right to assemble. I usually find that people protest or speak up. Nobody likes to come to these meetings and stand, talk, or even protest, but we come because we feel like our lives are on the line, and that's why we're protesting and that. This last, I've been involved in lots of movements. You may have known me from the clean energy things and the dirty energy stuff going on. But I found out through some reliable friends that vaccines aren't really what they're cracked up to be, and they're basically overkill. And I kind of want to go over it, because St. Louis County has a part in, you know, with the vaccines, with the county health department and the money that's all behind it. Just going over, in 1983, there were like 24 doses of vaccines given. The autism rate back then was 1 in 2,000. In 2016, it was 72 doses given, so they've upped the schedule, more and more stuff. And autism is 1 in 48 now, okay? By 2035, every one and every two children will be autistic at this rate. So we've got a problem. I've watched the movie Vaxxed, V-A-X-X-E-D. I'll give this to you. There's a CDC whistleblower who fraudulently frauded a study, and he says, "I can't believe we did what we did, but we did it." And he removed some of the people who were affected by this autism, black people. They removed those people out of the study. My niece and two nephews, my brother-in-law and sister, they're black, they have, all three children are autistic, they're the ages of my kids. And I kept thinking, "What's going on? What's going on?" For years, I've been kind of like wondering, "What's going on?" You know? And the increase of allergies, what is it? It's one out of every 10 people have allergies, autoimmune diseases, and it's all tied to it. I don't have the time to explain in 3 minutes, 46 seconds, what's going on, but something is. There's a huge, this is big industry, $50 billion a year, a trillion dollar a year. They can buy a lot of silence, and they have. They bought a lot of propaganda, they have. People are dying. There's... There's SIDS out there. One in every two thousand people, kids die. We didn't used to have kids, SIDS, growing up, when I was growing up, up until, you know, the 1990s. You know, they've changed the law in eighty-six to where they said you can't sue Big Pharma over vaccines. That's the law, and you have to go to special vaccine court. They've paid out three-point-eight billion dollars already on vaccine injuries and deaths. None of that makes the news because there's enough money to say it. It doesn't happen. This is some information I give to you. You can maybe give it to everybody else. They can do their own research, that's what it's going to take. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker is John Chasnow, followed by Susie Chasnow.
Hi, my name's John Chasnow. I'm a resident of University City, and I grew up in a family of lawyers, and my father taught me that this was a nation of laws. I used to argue with him and say some laws were unjust, and that's why I was in the Galleria on Saturday. But what I've come to learn, and I've had to fight my own instincts of white privilege to learn it, but what I've come to learn is that this is not a nation of laws. If it were, laws would not be applied selectively to advantage white people and people with money. If this were a nation of laws, what happened on Saturday would not have happened. So my wife and I were about five feet from the line of police, and we did hear the dispersal order. It was through a megaphone that was completely inadequate, and I find it hard to believe that you all could spend as much time and money preparing for this stockly verdict and all the money that goes into militarized police equipment, and you can't afford a microphone that can reach a crowd. So what we saw was people who couldn't hear, and before we had a chance to shout out that its dispersal order had been given, just like that, the officers were on top of the crowd and throwing people on the ground. You've, you've heard it over and over again. It was a completely unjustified and violent attack. If this were a nation of laws, the folks who are charged with rioting and resisting arrest would have those charges dropped. And the reason I say that is that I looked up the charge for rioting. The statute says a person commits the crime of rioting if he knowingly assembles with six or more other persons and agrees with such person to violate any of the criminal laws of the state with force or violence, and thereafter, while so assembled does violate said laws with force or violence. That's not what happened. If this were a nation of laws, we would drop the resisting arrest charge in the name of self-defense, because people have a right to defend themselves when they're viciously attacked. Now, this definition that I just read fits what the police did. They knowingly congregated and committed violations of state law with force and violence. So if this were a nation of laws, we'd be charging the police officers. We have had a prosecutor in that position who is the one, and who has been argued against for year after year, and if this were a nation of laws, we would not have a prosecutor who could bring these types of charges against our citizens. This is a prosecutor who I know will not prosecute these police officers, but he damn well sure, should. Thank you.
Next speaker is Susie Chasnow, followed by Susan Clark.
I wanted to bear witness to much of what has already been testified to. I grew up in St. Louis County. I went to schools, Clayton Schools, and then I went to school at Ladoo Schools, and I ended up in my career, my career as an elementary school teacher. I went with my husband to protest at the Galleria. It was a ra- raucous protest. We were actually, people were giving us signs like this through those chalk windows and blowing us kisses, so it didn't seem that we were very much disrupting the shop owners. We, at the end of the march, we gathered between the two escalators at Macy's. We were stopped, we were halted. There was no more moving around. And I suppose there were still people that were coming from the second floor down those escalators. I was in the group that was halted. About five feet behind me was four rows of officers. One of the officers put a megaphone in his hand and called out that this is a dispersal order. I looked at my husband, I said, "I can barely hear him. Nobody's going to hear him." I'm just sitting there thinking, "I need to yell out." The police gave a dispersal order, because I was really afraid about what was going to happen. Before I could yell out, there was a dispersal order given. Police ran. They beelined for certain targets, and they might have had those targets already picked out because four or five officers in a split second were on top of about five or six different people. They weren't running helter-skelter, they were going in teams to specific people. We finally eventually left, but it was, and went outside where they were also giving a dispersal order and just randomly throwing people on the ground. They could have thrown me on the ground, they just didn't. I don't know what their criteria was. It makes me wonder, is this a police tactic? Or is this a coincidence? And the reason why I ask that question, and it's a very, very serious question, because when you look what happened, they charged the protesters, and the protesters have looks of fear on their face, and I have a picture of this thirteen-year-old boy as he's being choked by a police officer, if you would like to see it. They had fear on their faces, they have police pounding down on them. So the photo op is violent protesters with police, you know, charging down on them. And then later, the police narrative is, it was chaotic. Well, it was chaotic because they were making it chaotic. There was rioting. It was rioting because the police were rioting, but they're creating a narrative. Now, why are they doing that? They're mad at us. They're mad as hell at us because we're not going to take it anymore. No more black youth get to get killed in this country. So I think we really have to take a look at what happened and why it happened, because this was not a police tactic, it was absolutely police incompetence.
Well, ma'am, you're going to have to step back to the next speaker. Susan Clark, followed by Daniel Kraft.
Good evening. Rather than, I'm a resident of Ladoo for two decades, and I'm going to just read because I don't believe I'll have the ability to speak off the cuff on this one. I strongly condemn the police and county employee behavior, both during the protest and arrests last Saturday and in the day that followed at the jail and court. First, the police actions at the Galleria were unacceptable. I assume you've all seen the videos and that have been publicly shared. This was, the protest was completely nonviolent. The only violence was instigated by the police. If they had wanted to make arrests, they could have done so without assaulting citizens, including those who were not involved in the protest. There were people arrested who were going to work. There were people arrested who were walking through and saw friends and went, "Hi," and boom. They could have allowed marchers to simply leave, as has happened at the other malls that they've protested at over the last week. Instead, police escalated the situation with their own actions and then labeled it a riot. It's obscene. The escalation by the police smacks of goon tactics used by city police, so it's no surprise that Brian Rosamano, who's a city police officer, was on site on Saturday. I can only assume that St. Louis County is using Prop P money to hire him, which is disheartening. Violent suppressions of nonviolent First Amendment actions, which is his specialty, is the wrong way to go. Period. Second, the behaviors by the county employees at the jail and court that afternoon and overnight and the next day were equally egregious. To deny lawyers access to their clients for twenty-four hours, almost twenty-four hours, to deprive citizens of needed medications for hours upon hours, to refuse lawyers' access to the judge on duty is inhumane, likely illegal, and not the behavior I expect of my government. The lawsuits resulting from this may well cost the county thousands upon thousands of dollars, if not more. I suggest every penny paid come out of Prop P funds. I ask that you demand the Police Board of Commissioners to hold public hearings on the arrests and treatment of those arrested. I ask that any contract with Rosamano and his company, O311 Tactical Solutions, be voided and that he be never hired again by the county. I ask you to consider if you wish to live in a community where citizen safety is at risk from the own police force.
Next speaker is Daniel, Daniel Kraft, followed by Cassandra Butler. Are you Daniel?
Yes. All right. So, like many of tonight's speakers, I'm here to talk about the elephant in the room, the Galleria protests. Now, I was not present for that protest. I was up in the woods beating my friends up with foam sticks in a completely legal fun game. Well, there's a reason I say that. In that game, mass charges are a common tactic. You move into an enemy line and you just don't ham. Well, that looked very familiar to the conduct used in the Galleria, where the police charged, tackled people, and just went crazy. Well, things like suplexing people, beating a thirteen-year-old child with, who reportedly suffered a broken arm, haven't confirmed that. Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, let's see, choking an old lady. Yeah, classy, guys. But as if in some sort of contest to, to commit the most egregious bull that they possibly could, they then decided, oh, yeah, we're not going to let lawyers into the Justice Center, Justice. We're not going to let people get their medications, we're not going to let former judges, and none of that. Like, what is, whatever's going on, it needs to stop. We need open and independent investigations, because frankly, having the cops investigate themselves is rather a bit of a fox in a hen house situation. And this is not okay. Like, I, I live here, I vote here, I go to school in this county, but honestly, I'm not happy with the conduct of our police, of the people in power. And bringing in Rosamano from the city, who is frankly a specialist in this kind of behavior, like, I don't think I can put it into words just how frustrated and angry I am with the people that are supposed to be protecting and serving our community, and I wasn't even there. I'm just basing this of what I've seen from constant videos. Every, many people live-recorded what happened. You could see it from plenty of different angles, and it was bad from all of them. And like the aforementioned trash can, people just moved that because it was a friggin' trip hazard, but honestly, I don't really know what to say other than we need to fix this. We need to investigate these people. We need to make, and we need to make long-term changes in how these are handled. We need, we need an effect, a more effective oversight board of better, we need better access to information for how to file complaints, and I've used up my time.
Thank you, Daniel.
The next speaker is Cassandra Butler, followed by James, I can't tell if it's Kraft or Groth.
I, I would like to agree with, I support that, the request of independent investigations. So I hope that happens. Also, I was not at the mall, but I've seen plenty of videos, and I was really, my breath was taken away when I saw them. And in particular, I want to mention Doc, the video of Dr. Frye and her thirteen-year-old grandson. And I'm thinking about a thirteen-year-old who's in the presence of two parental, in the custody of two parental people, his mother and his grandmother. So how do you tackle a thirteen-year-old who is being supervised by two parents? I don't, I don't understand how that happens. And so that made me think about Tamir Rice, you know, the twelve-year-old that was playing in the park that the police rolled up on and almost killed him before they actually got out the car, almost. And I thought about how Tamir Rice's mother was treated when she came to the park, and how his sister was treated when she came to the park. The fourteen-year-old sister was handcuffed and put in a car, and his mother, when she got there, the ambulance got there and the police threatened to arrest her, and she had to decide when ambulance came, whether to go with her dying son or to stay with her, her fourteen-year-old daughter who was in the custody of the police, who was frantic because her brother had just gotten killed. And so I don't understand how that happens. But then I, the next day, I see the charges again. I mean, any responsible parent is not going to let you snatch her cha, their child right there in a violent way. That's not going to, that shouldn't happen. So then to see the next day that the grandmother who was protecting her grandson gets four charges, probably got the, the heaviest charges of all twenty-two, of being assault, third degree assault of a special person, a new law, also a rioting charge, and two other resisting arrest charges. And then, you know, so I'm going to go back to what I asked you three years, two or three years ago, and I really want you to follow up on this, because I remember when Charlie Dooley, county exec, was the county executive, and you were talking about the 2014 budget in November and December of 2013, and he requested maybe three hundred thousand dollars, I can't quite remember, three hundred thousand.
Can you conclude your remarks?
Okay. I really want to know about the program that, that Bob McCullough was able to use that money instead of Charlie Dooley for, he asked for money for a public defender program. Mr. McCullough said he wanted to use the money instead to hire more lawyers, and that he would have a, maybe a first-time offender program instead. Since you granted that money to him, I would really like to have an evaluation of the program and how it's working.
Thank you.
Next speaker is James Kraft, followed by Emery Cax IV.
Good evening. I speak today in my capacity as clergy for the Ethical Society of St. Louis, a congregation of around four hundred members that has made its home on Clayton Road, just around the corner from the Galleria Mall for the past fifty-two years, as a member of Metropolitan Congregations United and as a member of this community. But mostly, I speak for the members of my congregation and my friends who were at the Galleria Mall on Saturday, some of whom were violently arrested for exercising their First Amendment rights. I'm disgusted by the events at the Galleria on Saturday. You've heard today that no audible order to disperse was given before police charged through a busy mall, snatching up people in the vicinity, whether they had anything to do with the protests or not. People were slammed to the ground, choked, kicked, and punched. The police violence in response to a nonviolent protest was egregious and wrong. This unethical behavior continued after arrest. Arrestees were not read their Miranda rights or informed of what they were charged with. They were repeatedly denied access to legal representation. People who demanded access to a lawyer were punished with solitary confinement. A personal friend was denied access to essential medication they required for an extended period of time, and as you've heard, at one point, the doors to the Justice Center were handcuffed shut. I can think of few metaphors more poignant than a house of justice handcuffed. In case these ethical concerns do not convince you, and I think they should, but just in case, consider how damaging to the image of city of St. Louis it is for images like those captured on Saturday to spread virally across the internet. As Centene spends hundreds of millions of dollars here, a site man expands to fluorescent. Do you want St. Louis County to become the face of police violence? Police throttling grandmothers and slamming children to the floor? In a statement issued on September twentieth, Steve Steyer gave his answer to the question, "Who's streets?", and in this statement, he said, "As to those who would ignore the law, who would violate the rights of their fellow citizens and wreak senseless harm and havoc, I want to send a clear message, these are not your streets, and they never will be." On Saturday, the people wreaking senseless harm and havoc, the people violating the rights of their fellow citizens, the people ignoring the law, were the police. We must have an immediate, independent investigation into the police riot of We must have an immediate, independent investigation into the police riot of Saturday, 23rd of September. All charges against those arrested in this incident should be dropped, and we must consider how we can ensure that our police do not forget their duty in such a disgraceful way again.
The next speaker is Emory Cax IV, followed by Jason Goldcamp.
Hello, yes, I'm very nervous right now. I've been rather upset about several things, and I'm just a white suburban guy who wasn't even at the Galleria this past weekend. I can only imagine how other people, especially the victims of institutional racism, are feeling right now. We've heard from people who have far more knowledgeable and relevant comments than I do about the weekend's events, and I don't think that I can say anything unique about that. So instead, I want to bring up a quote from the so-called Peeling Principles. Robert Peel was a civil servant and a law enforcement theorist who wrote a Code of Ethics. One of his points was, "The police at all times should maintain a relationship with the public that gives reality to the historic tradition that the police are the public and the public are the police. The police are the only members of the public who are paid to give full-time attention to the duties which are incumbent on every citizen in the intent of community welfare." The police are not a side in a war. Our police are ostensibly part of our community, so I think that we should ask ourselves what role we want the St. Louis County Police Department to have. I think that we should all take a step back and consider what Robert Peel's statement implies. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jason Goldcamp, followed by Christine Hendrick.
Hi, I'm Jason Goldcamp. I was present at the Galleria. I just wanted to cover a couple of things. Please, we need a permanent citizen review board. We need an independent investigation into the Galleria. And also, the most disturbing thing was the guy who had a kidney transplant and couldn't get his medication. There were people putting up signs on the window, like this guy's friend putting a sign up on the window, just like, please, like, read this, this guy just had a kidney transplant, like, he needs his medication. And I watched the cops, like, just waving him away, and like, he's like, did you see it? Yes, no, there's just like no GTFO. And so, oh, that makes me think of another thing, hey, hey, ho, ho, Rosamano's gotta go. That guy's a nightmare. And another thing about the medication of, I could have been one of the people arrested at the Galleria, and if I had been arrested at the Galleria and been denied access to my medications for more than 12 hours, this would be even more of a S show, because I would die. I would have seizures and die. So if, you know, people need to be able to have access to medication at the Justice Center. That needs to change immediately, because they were grabbing people indiscriminately. If I had been one of those grabbed and kept without medication for 24 hours, this would be a very different story. Also, well, I'm just gonna let other people speak, but take it seriously. Yeah. Thank you.
The next speaker is Christine Hendrick, followed by Clinton Stansel. Ma'am, you're using your time.
Good evening. How are you? My name is Christine Hendricks. I am on the University City School Board and resident of University City. I am an activist. I wasn't there on Saturday, but I kinda wanted to do a little education with you guys. When I was in elementary school, I learned about something called the Boston Tea Party. Now, during the Boston Tea Party, it was rowdy guys, white men dressed as natives, went on a British boat, threw off a bunch of tea, and then birthed a nation. Years of slavery, Jim Crow oppression, lynchings ensued, and then we come to September 23rd, 2017, where somebody who looks much like my grandmother was attacked by the police. Why? Because she was defending her grandson, a 13-year-old. I have a 13-year-old black grandson, or black son, I'm sorry, I'm not on the fear grandma yet. But I do have a 13-year-old son. He's my height. He weighs more than me. He can pick me up. And I believe, and I do take him protesting with me at times. He would have been at the Galleria with me had I been there. And had a police officer put his hands on my child, I can't say that I wouldn't have tried to defend him with all of my life, because that is my child. And if I can't put my hands on my child, I for damn sure won't let anybody else, right? So that's just what I wanted to say about that. I also just wanted to say that a country that was founded on protesting, violent protesting actually, destruction of property because of taxation, and people peacefully walked through a mall, a mall that lets people exercise there all the time, even before they're open, and yet police came down on somebody's grandmother? I didn't see it, but I was following the livestream all day. And so, you know, like, when I heard about the child, you know, I was crying, I was really emotional. I've been arrested because of protesting. I've always been treated poorly because of it, so I understood. So I say, once I was done with what I did on Saturday, I went to the jail. And like everybody said, people were being denied medications. I actually have a picture that I can show you of the locked doors that they had handcuffed, because that, as everybody knows, is a fire violation. It's against the law at the Injustice Center. That's what they did. They locked it. So yes, we do need an independent counsel to investigate the police. Every time something happens that involves them, when they're rioting and breaking the laws, when they're killing unarmed civilians, it needs to be an independent investigation, the Independent Civilian Oversight Board. Also, de-escalation. I do know that you're, St. Louis County teaches de-escalation training by a police officer, so it's not that you guys don't have de-escalation training, it's that you're not using it, and you're being ignorant to what de-escalation means, which is the least amount of contact it takes to de-escalate a situation. That did not happen on Saturday. Thank you.
Next speaker is Clinton Stansel, followed by Keith Rose.
Good afternoon. I represent, I'm from Wayman African Methodist Episcopal Church, I'm the pastor there. And as I stand here today, I was at a press conference, and I heard one of my colleagues refer to this as an act of domestic terrorism. That concerned me, because I don't want to live in a state where police act like terrorists. And so I went and I looked up the definition of terrorist, because I was concerned that one of my colleagues would use the word terrorism in referring to police. But Webster says that terrorism is a calculated use of violence, a threat of violence against its citizens in order to obtain goals that are political, religious, ideology, and nature, and this is done through intimidation, coercion, and instilling fear. That's what Webster says terrorism is. And so when you choke a 13-year-old, read Webster. When you take a grandmother and choke her and refuse to give her her medicine, refer back to Webster. When you lock people up unjustly and not allow them to protest, and send police in in riot gear to bring fear to citizens who are just quietly protesting, I ask you to refer back to Webster. Maybe it is an act of terrorism.
Next speaker is Keith Rose.
Okay, let's let our speakers have the podium. Thank you.
Hello. None of this is new. Six months ago, I came before this council. Earlier that week, there had been renewed protests in Ferguson outside of the Ferguson Market due to the release of a video related to Michael Brown's death. After your county officers had violently arrested three people at the protest, including knocking one man unconscious and body slamming a pregnant woman, I was asked to help find them attorneys and get the arrestees out of jail and take them to the hospital. While trying to get them out of jail, we were repeatedly lied to, including hours of being told that an injured arrestee had already been released, when in fact, he was inside the building and was later released out into the snow about 30 minutes after we left the area. A colleague and I came to the council on March 14th to tell you that you needed to look into the ways employees at your jail were misbehaving and depriving people of their rights. I see that nothing has changed. This past weekend, employees at your jail repeatedly lied to attorneys, barred them from speaking to their clients, and conspired to keep them from getting in front of the duty judge to challenge those decisions. Employees at your jail prevented arrested people from receiving their prescription medication. Employees prevented all non-attorneys from entering the building. You shouldn't have to have a bar card to pay someone's bail. What are you going to do about your jail this time? Will you ignore the problems yet again? Will I be back here in six more months to tell you about a new atrocity? I do not want any of you to pretend that you were shocked by what you've heard here tonight, because you've heard it all before, and you've just chosen to ignore it.
Okay. Thank you all for your remarks tonight. We will, we will still be here. For anyone that has anything to say, this forum will always be open to hear your concerns. Anybody want to make a comment?
I hope I can make through this. What I witnessed on Facebook and on the news can only be categorized as excessive force. And hearing today what happened, it is very obvious to me that the police totally overstepped their authority. When police officers choose to sweep, chose to sweep the mall, it was wrong decision, because protesters were peacefully chanting and marching, maybe loudly, but they were peacefully chanting and marching, and therefore innocent bystanders and the like were arrested. It was heart-wrenching when I saw the picture that was posted earlier. I saw the terror in the eyes of a 13-year-old child's face while being arrested, and the desperation in the eyes of a grandmother who had to witness her grandson being manhandled. And she couldn't do nothing. She had to watch while pleading, I'm sure, asking them to stop. A few minutes later, she was choked and arrested as well for aggressively and actively protesting the arrest of her grandson. While police officers were actually angry and agitated due to the acts of one or two individuals, they took it out on all the people protesting. While we are always told, all cops are not bad, only some cops are bad, most cops are good, so we shouldn't treat them all the same. But that's what happened on Saturday. And instead of simply addressing the individuals they determined who had acted inappropriately, they did a sweep of the entire mall. It happened to two other Caucasian families that I'm aware of, and probably others. There were two parents and a son. There was a woman with her child who spoke the other day, and they took their child and arrested them both, one who was simply just shopping that day. These people are simply exercising their First Amendment rights, the right that Dr. Martin Luther King spoke of, and it was mentioned earlier, the right to protest for rights. That's your First Amendment right, free speech. We mentioned someone who needed medication, the older lady you just saw, she needed her medication. I called, Representative Stacy Newman called, pastors, rabbis, we all called, asking that the people arrested get their medication. And unbeknownst to me, they did not get their medication, and I feel offended by that, that if I call, you can't at least tell me you're not gonna do that? You gave me the impression that this woman was getting her medication, and I found out she didn't get it till the next morning. That's a, I don't know the word, maybe an affront to legislators who've been elected to represent the people, and you disregard our requests. It's not, that's not a hard request, we're not asking anything wrong. Why would we ignore, I don't understand that. And I'm really, I must say it now, after everything I've heard, I'm trying to get through this as quickly as possible. But on Sunday, moving to Sunday, church members came out after church. We attended our church services, and we came out because we wanted to support these people who were held. And I asked, came to the door and asked, could I come in? You know, I wanted to really see Reverend Dr. Frye, but I didn't say that, I just asked, could I come inside? I was told, no. Didn't matter who I was. I said, well, what about a state rep? Would you let them in? No. I don't understand that. I spoke with the county executive early on Saturday, spoke with the prosecuting attorney, spoke with Chief Bellmore. Never was I once advised that their place was on lockdown. That's offensive. I don't know, maybe I'm nobody, I guess. Once again, the church members, they, you know, we were there for a long time, because these people were held really past the 24 hours that you're supposed to be held. So they got tired and agitated, and they decided to march around. And for some reason, because I stayed there, I didn't have on the proper shoes for walking, so I stayed there. Of course, we wanted some people to be there if they came out while they were marching. Did you know that the Overland Police had been called? And from my days in the legislature, I know that costs additional money when you call police from another department. Overland Police were called to block the street once they were to come around. They had on riot gear, helmets, I don't know what they thought was going to happen, trying to chase the marchers down, but they couldn't keep up because nobody knew where they were going, they just wanted, there's nobody here, you know, in Clayton, so I don't know what they thought was gonna happen in time. But they put on this riot gear, we're apparently gonna have to pay for these officers. And I'd say it took maybe 15, 20 minutes, and they left. The police officers left because nothing happened. And no sooner had the marchers returned, they were released. And when they were released, most of us, because they're my age or older, or maybe some younger, we were, we left. We weren't there to cause any trouble. We just wanted to support our fellow man who was arrested. So most of us left, and we would have been gone if you let them out on time. To conclude, yes, I do also go along with the letter that Representative Stacy Newman wrote. I concur, and I request an independent investigation as well. I also request as a member of this body, a meeting with key players to find out what happened, when she and I may request why they weren't adhered to, and why we weren't, especially myself, as being a member of this body, informed of everything that was going on. And I too request de-escalation training, things I requested as a legislature in the House, State of Representatives, House of Representatives, and I will reintroduce some of this legislation here on a local level. And I thank you for your time, and thank you all for coming today. I really appreciate you. I heard a lot, and it was important to hear, and I appreciate it.
Any other comments? This concludes our public forum. Please proceed with introduction of bills.
Full Street! Our Streets! Full Street! Our Streets! Full Street! Our Streets! Our Streets is our duty to fight for our freedom! It is our duty to win! We have nothing to lose but our change! We have nothing to lose but our change! It is our duty to fight for our freedom! It is our duty to fight for our freedom! It is our duty to win! It is our duty to win! We must love and support each other! We must love and support each other! We have nothing to lose but our change! We have nothing to lose but our change! It is our duty to win!
We must love and support each other!
We must love and support each other!
We have nothing to lose but our change!
We have nothing to lose but our change!
It is our duty to fight for our freedom!
It is our duty to fight for our freedom!
It is our duty to win!
It is our duty to win!
We must love and support each other!
We must love and support each other!
We have nothing to lose but our change!
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 Shut it down!
And if you kill our kids...
Shut it down!
You're not getting that, you're gonna get all that, you're gonna put it next to
that.
I'm not gonna wipe it off.
I know she was right, so why would she care?
Something goes to the...
This is very...
She fell over there.
Yeah, she hit the ramp.
Are you gonna have this to sit down on?
You're wrong and you learned the wrong side of history. Adam, don't talk to me. I'm not doing anything, I'm talking in a courtroom. Whatever this topic is, whatever happens, am I allowed to talk, or are you going to arrest me?
Shall I proceed, Mr. Chair? Bill number two forty-five, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Monsanto Company for lease of property at Spirit of St. Louis Airport, and authorizing termination of the lease authorized by ordinance number eighteen thousand six hundred and twenty-three. Bill number two forty-six, introduced by Councilmember Harder, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Tracys Corporation Incorporated for construction of drainage improvements at Spirit of St. Louis Airport. Bill number two forty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with NextGen RCM Services LLC doing business as healthcare strategic initiatives to serve as grantee agent under the Ryan White Treatment Extension Act of two thousand nine. Bill number two forty-eight, introduced by Councilmembers Page, Wassinger, and Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Adalino Winters Hubner Incorporated for consulting services in connection with construction of restroom projects in three county parks. Bill number two forty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Page, and ordinance amending Chapter six sixteen, Title six, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since nineteen seventy-four as amended county parks, parkways, and recreational areas by repealing and reenacting Section six sixteen point two thirty pertaining to various user fees and assessments related to use of county park facilities and services. Bill number two fifty, introduced by Councilmember Harder, for Councilmember Tracus, and ordinance amending ordinance number twenty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-three by repealing and reenacting Section two pertaining to PC thirteen dash sixteen, Clean Lake Construction Company Incorporated. Bill number two fifty-one, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, for Councilmember Erby, and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R four Residence District and the R five Residence District as provided herein, PC twenty-five dash sixteen, Sherman Strong. Bill number two fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, for Councilmember Erby, and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R three Residence District and the R four Residence District as provided herein, PC thirty-one dash sixteen, H W Associates LP. Bill number two fifty-three, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, for Councilmember Erby, and ordinance authorizing and giving preliminary approval to an amended planned environment unit development of attractive land located in the R two Residence District, F P R dash two floodplain Residence District, R three Residence District, F P R three floodplain Residence District, R four Residence District, and the F P R four Residence District, subject to conditions, and repealing ordinance number nine thousand twenty-five, PC thirty-two dash sixteen, H W Associates LP. Bill number two fifty-four, introduced by Councilmember Harder, for Councilmember Tracus, and ordinance amending the St. Louis County zoning ordinance and the official zoning district maps by changing the boundaries of the R four Residence District and the R three Residence District as provided herein, PC thirty-one dash seventeen, Jeffrey Nagbar. Mr. Chair, that's all the bills.
Perfection.
Bill number one sixty-two, introduced by Councilmembers Page and Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number one sixty-two will be held.
Bill number one eighty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Please hold Bill number one sixty-nine, and one sixty-nine is held. Eighty-nine? I'm sorry, one eighty-nine, thank you.
Bill number one ninety, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Moved, hold Bill number one ninety, and Bill number one ninety will be held.
Bill number two twenty-two, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Please hold Bill two twenty-two.
Bill number two twenty-two is held.
Bill number two twenty-seven, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I would like to move this Bill, number two twenty-seven, for perfection.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number two twenty-seven is perfected.
Bill number two thirty-six, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I'd like to move, perfect Bill number two thirty-six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number two thirty-eight is perfected.
Bill number two thirty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I'd like to move to perfect Bill number two thirty-eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number two thirty-eight is perfected.
Bill number two forty-one, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect, no, we're gonna hold this one. Bill number two forty-one is held.
Bill number two forty-two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number two forty-two.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number two forty-two is perfected.
Bill number two forty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move to perfect Bill number two forty-three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Bill number two forty-four is perfected.
Bill number one eighty-three, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for the...
We're gonna hold that one.
We're gonna hold, okay, that's what I thought, that's why I stopped. I move to hold Bill number one eighty-three.
Bill number one eighty-three is held.
Substitute Bill number two for Bill number two twenty-five, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray.
Before I move to final passes, Bill again, we realize this is a five-year lease, and we would like to locate a permanent home for the youth center, and we, again, we feel that the rent is so much that we should actually try to purchase property and not keep paying rent year after year. So I do finally, I move to final pass, substitute Bill number two for Bill number two two five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, substitute Bill number two for Bill number two twenty-five, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two twenty-five is finally passed.
Bill number two twenty-six, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, Page, Councilmembers Walton Gray, Page, and Erby.
I move to hold Bill number two two six.
Bill number two twenty-six is held.
Bill number two twenty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Move for final passage of Bill two twenty-nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two twenty-nine, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two twenty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number two thirty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two thirty-two, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two thirty-two is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number two thirty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two forty, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two forty is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have two this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Resolution number one will hold its place.
If it's not introduced, Mr. Chair, then should we, if it's kind of council, should we renumber the resolution that is being introduced as resolution one?
Sure, I think that would be appropriate, Mr. Chair. Sounds good.
Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray for Councilmember Erby.
I move for the passes of Resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two thirty-nine, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two twenty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-two, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number two thirty-two.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two thirty-two, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two thirty-two is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-three, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Move for final passage of Bill number two thirty-three.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two thirty-three, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two thirty-three is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-four, introduced by Councilmember Page for Councilmember Harder.
Move for final passage of Bill number two thirty-four.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two thirty-four, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two thirty-four is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-five, introduced by Councilmembers Erby, Page, Erby for Wassinger, Walton Gray, and Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill number two thirty-five.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two thirty-five, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two thirty-five is finally passed.
Bill number two thirty-nine, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Bill two thirty-nine.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two thirty-nine, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two thirty-nine is finally passed.
Bill number two forty, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Bill two forty.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Erby, Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wassinger.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, Bill number two forty, there are five i's and two absents.
Bill number two forty is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair, we have two this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Resolution number one will hold its place.
If it's not introduced, Mr. Chair, then should we, if it's kind of council, should we renumber the resolution that is being introduced as resolution one?
Sure, I think that would be appropriate, Mr. Chair. Sounds good.
Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray for Councilmember Erby.
I move for the passes of Resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call.